To mute people here.
All right, great. Okay, welcome everyone to the committee of the whole October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty board meeting. Roll call, all trustees are present, so let's jump right in. First off on the agenda is forty-four Stevens Street proposed business called The Bridge. Jason or Mark, do you want to take the lead on this?
Yes, I will. Hey, George, where are you going to?
Yep, I'll stop sharing so you can grab the screen if you want to go ahead.
All right, thank you. So yes, the first item here is a special use request for the bridge, which is proposed to be located at twenty-two Stevens Street. The applicant is The Bridge LLC represented by Jerry Kohanik. The property is in the downtown district. The specific special use request is for banquet facility with outdoor dining. So the proposed use would again be located at forty-four Stevens Street, which is at the corner of Stevens and Front Street. The applicant is proposing to occupy approximately seven thousand square feet of the building, plus an additional roughly five thousand nine hundred square feet area in the rear, outdoor, for the banquet hall facility that would accommodate up to approximately four hundred people on the site. And again, outdoor dining and excuse me, the banquet hall use and outdoor dining on private property of ten or more people, both of those require special use approval. And looking at the proposed use with both the Village Unified Development Ordinance and also our Comprehensive Plan, the Lamont twenty thirty Plan, the U D O with the downtown district notes that the purpose of the district is to create and promote a compatible mix of uses in a compact and pedestrian oriented manner. And again, the Comprehensive Plan, which designates the property as mixed use, that is also characterized by having a mix of uses. In addition, the company has an additional recommendation regarding developing the downtown as a destination for residents and visitors. And you know, the proposed banquet hall use would sort of accomplish both of these purposes. On the screen on the left is the Plata Survey Site Plan provided by the applicant. So the existing building, they're not occupying the whole building. The space to the west or southwest is currently occupied by Wags to Riches. And then you can also see to the north, the sort of outdoor area that is part of their property. They wouldn't necessarily utilize the entire space. The applicant, in terms of the outdoor use, is looking to put some sort of gazebo or covered structure for ceremonies, possibly have a fire pit and of course have some tables and chairs out there. But they would leave in a about a ten-foot drive aisle to help with deliveries and traffic circulation. They are proposing to have, you know, live and or amplified music out there similar to what is currently happening at places such as Pollyanna or Next Max. But they would kind of locate the bulk of that outdoor use a little bit further to the east to be sensitive to the fact that there are people to the west living in the lots. The other image on your screen toward the right side of your screen is their floor plan. So the area is sort of, there's a mezzanine that's about three hundred and fifty square feet. Then there's also what is being referred to as a pre-function room, which has about eighty-five seats and a bar. And then the larger room, which is the function room, which would have about two hundred and fifty seats plus an additional twenty-five seats or stools by the bar area. And there would be a partition in between those two areas that, you know, you could partition areas often to do different spaces, or you can have one large space. So parking and traffic are kind of key issues with this type of a banquet use. With parking per code, per the U D O, there is no onsite or off-street parking required. There's no parking requirement in the downtown district for lots that are less than half an acre. So there's no parking required. But we still wanted to look at this with it being a special use. So first, we did look at it in terms of if parking were to be required in the downtown, that's based on floor area. It's based on leasable or saleable square footage. So using that calculation, they're only required to have like seven parking spaces. And those parking spaces could be within five hundred feet of the property. And as you can see on the map on your left, there is several public parking facilities, including the parking garage in the lots within five hundred feet. Our planner Jamie, she also then took it another step further and kind of looked at similar uses such as like restaurants and such, and then also what requirements are in some other municipalities. And kind of came up with a more, you know, larger number that is more typical for this type of use of a hundred to a hundred and thirty-two parking spaces. And with that, this is the map on the right, is kind of looking at the downtown in terms of the typical walkable area. So in in planning, we we talk about a quarter-mile buffer or a quarter-mile area, and that's typically similar to a five-minute walk. So this is sort of a walking area. And again, within that quarter-mile area, again, most of the downtown's in there, multiple public parking facilities, including in this case, then the entirety of the metro parking lot would be within that quarter-mile buffer area. In addition, then, we did get the traffic study, a traffic impact study last week. Some key observations from that. First, the the peak use of the banquet facility, which would be on weekends during during the evening, and it would result in additional six, one hundred and sixty peak hour trips in the downtown district. The nearby intersections of Steven and Main and Steven and Front would both operate at a satisfactory level of service with minimal additional delays, according to the study. The study also noted that the amount of parking available far exceeds the demands for the use and that there's sufficient pedestrian accommodations to link where those parking areas are to this use. They did have some recommendations, including things regarding additional wayfinding signage that the applicant can put out when they have larger events. They had some suggestions on the operation of a shuttle service in terms of how it should flow through the downtown if one of these larger events has a shuttle service provided. And a recommendation for additional traffic control, you know, people on the on the street directing people for larger events. So this item, the public hearing for this request was held at our October seventh Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed the proposed special uses. They also noted that per the plans, there is a new sort of exit stairway being proposed that would encroach into the front street right away. And they also then further discuss traffic and parking issues. Keep in mind, the traffic study that I just mentioned had not been made available, unfortunately. At that time, like I said, it came in just this last week. We had two members of the public attend the meeting, and they were both generally favorable to the proposal, but had some questions and comments, mostly about the outdoor area. These were residents of the lots wanting to again, you know, make sure that the parking and the noise and any smoke, any of that stuff would not be a nuisance to them. And then there was some discussion of the parking situation at the lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission made a unanimous positive recommendation of the use based on staff's conditions. Those conditions, there were these seven conditions at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And then we did staff add an eighth condition. After the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, once we got the traffic study back, which is essentially to, you know, sort of incorporate the recommendations from the traffic study of these items. I also do want to note item number one about the outdoor dining area with the times, those sort of generally align with some of the other similar special uses that we've had over the last couple of years. So those are all the question, all the presentation that I have. I know Jerry, the applicant is present as well. So we're, Jerry, did you have anything that you wish to add to the presentation?
No, it, you covered it well again.
But we're available for any questions.
Great, thanks, Mark. And thanks, Jerry, for your interest in continuing to invest in our town. Jerry, just a couple, you know, high-level questions. Obviously, we're just really trying to talk about use today, so don't want to get into too many, you know, details of the business plan, but just in general, can you comment on on what you're expecting to do with this with this banquet hall? Is it weddings? Is it weekend only? What's kind of your your basic business plan?
Yeah, the the business plan was pretty much weekends for weddings, thinking those get booked up pretty pretty well and pretty good. Then during the week, we would have, we were thinking about doing a comedy night, you know, in a smaller banquet area, try that a couple of times, maybe. Obviously, do any kind of event that anybody would just need, you know, even, you know, funerals and things like that, you know, typical typical what a banquet facility would do, but we would also try to do something like what do you call it, like comedy night, or or we were even saying in the big room, we could do a bags tournament and the winners and, you know, pick a day just to keep people to keep coming down there and then and we have the space and, you know, it's got to be heated or cooled and so that's kind of our goal, just, but it would be strictly event concerts. We would like to have either small concerts in there as well. That's another big one I almost forgot to say. And then, you know, but again, it's a smaller venue and and I think it'd be more for table-sitting kind of concerts than more than, you know, standing around and
Jerry, just just in general, you know, I don't want to get in the details of the build-out. I'm just looking at magnitude, you know, because it's an investment. What would be your estimated investment, you know, to build it out, to get it up and running?
You know, I was, I put a number to it earlier, and I think now we're kind of in the sprinkler stage, so I'm probably looking, we're going to be without furniture and everything, we're probably going to be in the four hundred range at least. So it's a, it's a little bit of an expense there.
Sure, sure. And just in general, Jerry, are you okay with with the the seven plus the 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 traffic study, the, you know, what what planning and zoning, are you good with with abiding or or trying to abide by those recommendations?
Yeah, nothing there was a was anything that we can deal with, correct? Yeah, everything was fine.
Okay, cool. That that's it. That's all I have right now. Any of the other trustees have any comments or questions?
Oh, this is Ron Staple. I have a question on the hours from eight AM to two AM. It seems like awful early opening.
It is. You know, the only reason I put eight, I just didn't want to restrict anything. I mean, the earliest I think you'd see maybe a luncheon banquet or something going on, I I just know from when we opened up another location, we kind of restricted our hours, and then it was kind of a, you know, not an ordeal, but more, you know, something to go, I mean, I don't see anything happen between eight and ten, but you know, if if it does happen, I don't want to have to run somewhere and try to get that approved or something, so.
So basically, it's going to be like you said, banquets, funeral luncheon, stuff like that.
Have masks in there on Sunday morning as well, so.
Will it be an everyday bar and restaurant or?
No, no, not currently, it will not be in every, it will not be open every day, it will only be open for events.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hey, Jerry, this is trustee Kittredge. I just have two just quick questions. My first concern is, have you talked to Wags and Riches at all?
Yes, I talk to them every other day.
I mean, I just don't want any issues for you on behalf of, because their hours will definitely crisscross in what you guys are doing. And I know that they're, you know, a pretty successful little business, but they're, but the dogs and everything could be a little challenging, I'm assuming. So as long as you understand that, except I'd hate for any issues on that.
Yeah, we have been in contact and we're working like on coordinating some hours, at least for the weekends, is our is our most important thing. Everything else we can, we can live with and tell people, hey, this is what it is there, but you know, on a during a wedding or something, that's kind of our real main concern. We have been discussing with them and I one way or another, we'll be fine if, you know, it's, he has been my tenant for two years and we get along pretty well, so.
Okay, good. And then the other question I had is just, you know, Lamont likes to run a lot of functions through that street. So I know you're very aware of that, so you don't see that being a problem down the road if we ever want to no, grave going and all that.
Yeah, I know. So I used to be part of bottles and we used to have some pretty big events there and so we kind of I know Pollyanna well, so basically we know kind of the big events that happen downtown, so we're going to have those on our on our calendar as we talk with people who, you know, whenever you're about using, who want to rent the space or something and have that ready. And we've also, I already talked to Stan on certain days, if metro parking lot is going to be used by something, because that's going to be our main parking area for valet and for drop-offs, and then we'd have a, we'll have a shuttle going back and forth. So if anything happens in the metro parking lot and we do have a wedding that day, I have to talk to Stan about using this lot in the back, which we could fit about anywhere from forty cars just parking to fifty if we do the valet, we could stack fifty in there, so. And, you know, got permission from him. So it's, we have talked about it, we've definitely thought about it, and we're just gonna, you know, we'll have to hit hit them as they come, I guess, you know, I would say on that.
Okay, that's that's all I had.
Hey, Jerry, real quick, will you have a full kitchen?
No, no, no full kitchen. It'll be just a prep area. Everything that we're going to do there is going to be catered. We are not going to, you know, make any food there at the moment. The the thought process is eventually, if we get to the point where we think it might be worth doing cooking, we would move into a partial area of waggs to riches. And I've talked to him about that already as well, so, but obviously that would be another drawing permits to do the kitchen, so.
Gotcha. And Janelle made a good point. So obviously, you're well aware, you're in town, you know, you know, anywhere from you know, when we have the metro lot filled with the high school, you know, event in September, I mean, obviously, you know, we're going to have to make sure we we manage you know, events if there's double bookings on on such nights. So obviously, you're you're in town, you understand those.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And and it's, you know, we're not going to have a four hundred event every weekend, you know, I wish that was our problem, but never know, but I'm not, I'm not guessing that'll be the norm, but it'd be great, especially, we were good to the number anyway at the beginning here, so it'll give us a good practice run.
Any other questions or comments?
Yep, this is Maher. I have a couple things. I I like the idea down there, Jerry, so I'm I'm in support of that. Parking I'm concerned about on the bigger events. And I'm especially used, this this is for a special use, and I'm wondering, and this is probably for our planning staff, if we could tie in some type of required shuttle for certain events that are a certain size. My concern is, if you have an event that's three hundred people, you're going to wipe out all the parking in the area. If we don't, if we don't force people into the metro lot, and that's going to affect all the other businesses. So, you know, bottles and Pollyanna's and Hueys are also requiring those parking, but the garage has how many spots in the garage, guys? Hundred and something?
Hundred and sixty or so.
And how many of them are, how many are permitted to the to the building?
Two sixty, eighty permitted, right?
Yeah, that's correct. So I I just want to be, I I want to be conscious of the other businesses. So I'm just wondering, can we tie the shuttle, the shuttle that you were talking about, Jerry, I know you were already talking about it. And can we put a certain size on it and say anything over X size? And I don't, I don't, I don't claim to know the right number, but I I don't think it's I don't think for, if you have an event of four hundred people, I think you're going to, if we, or three hundred people, you're taking all the parking in downtown if we're not forcing them into metro, so. I was wondering if we can tie that onto the special use somewhere, guys, and we can work on the number, if the number's two fifty or above or two hundred or whatever it is, but I I'm thinking two fifty is going to have a lot of cars, so. That's my one thought.
We were thinking, you figure if it's going to be two cars a person, anything over, you know, two hundred is going to be a hundred cars, which I think is on the high side, and I think that that's the level that we were, we were going to require shuttle. It is something that we're going to, we're going to purchase and have our own and hire a hired driver for that.
So can we, are you okay if we put that in the in the special use then?
Um, yeah, I should be fine with that. If if you want to pick a, you know, two hundred or whatever.
I'm trying with two hundred. I I mean, two hundred works for me as well.
Because we were going to try to, you know, play and see how it goes a couple of times. We'd have the shuttle either way, and if it gets us used, great. And if you know, everybody's going to, everybody that we're going to rent to will have the places to park coordinated as the metro parking lot and tell them that we're offering valet and shuttle service depending on on the on the amount of people.
Right, yeah, okay, good. And and I'm comfortable starting there as well. I don't know what other people think, but and that helps you probably a little bit for selling your but your shuttle service, because you say, well, you got to have a shuttle at two hundred, because the building requires it, so. If that makes sense. Okay, cool, thank you. The front street, this probably goes more for Mark and and Jason. Is there thought of us making that area down there one way? We're we're starting to get traffic down there. You you get, if if you're driving down there or wa- even walking down there when 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 we actually have train service to downtown, the front street, you you can't have two cars going both ways consistently. So I feel like we've got a now as we're adding more cars into that area, we've got to probably do something with front street to to limit traffic. It's just a thought, so. I don't know what what your thought is there, but I I think if you're, even if you're doing valet and you're doing a drop-off consistently here, it seems like front street should go be, should be one way going west.
And that's something we can look into. One thing that was in the traffic study related to the shovel, shuttle service, that recommendation that they had was to not use front street because of the width.
Yeah.
Noted.
Yeah, so I I don't know if we can do some, put it on on something to be able to, this isn't related to Jerry, this is just my concern in the area for safety for Jerry, but I definitely wouldn't mind hearing something back if we we should change that, because I I mean, I know when I was driving down there, when I was taking the train, it's, you just, it's very difficult to have two cars continuously going down there, so. Jerry, the bar, you you kind of talked about some events that you were in there. I'm assuming your liquor permit, you are not going to be a cash bar, you're not looking to be a cash bar in your liquor permit. I don't know how that, like, what those onings are, but is that something that you see, like, if you have a bags tournament, then you would need a cash bar. So how does that work, I guess?
We were going to get, we were obviously going to get a liquor license, and I think we we need to be a cash bar. I mean, we did look at it and I know at the beginning, we're going to, we're going to basically even sub out the alcohol, just to, you know, avoid any liabilities in that, even though we'll have our own insurance, but we do eventually want to be at the point where we'll, we'll be doing our own our own sales if if required for for events.
Okay.
Certain events, we, it's, you know, you can't really, you know, say it's thirty bucks a head, all you can drink is that people kind of go, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, A, it would be unaffordable and B, you get people that that just, you know.
They'll drink you out of thirty dollars, right?
Uh, just not even that, they'll, the point that they they can't, because it's free, you know.
Yeah, right. Okay, so so it sounds like you're, the expectation is is from, for practical purposes, it's going to have a bar. And it may or, it it's not going to be necessarily open regularly, but you could get to a point where you decide you want to open it regularly too, right? All right, that that was, that's it for me. Thank you. I appreciate it. I think it's a, it'll be a nice addition down there. Nice job.
Thanks.
Hey, hey, Jerry, Dave brought up a good point. So every event there, you're going to sponsor and take I guess, legal liability, meaning you're not just going to rent it out to the, you know, whatever it may be, the the Boy Scouts or whatever, you know, dads or whatever, and then have them serve, you know, we're, I I mean, how how would you? So I mean, is it, is it, is it, is it for rent or or is it every, every party or whatever, you guys actually do the entertaining or the hosting, I should say?
We will do all entertaining and hosting, correct? At the beginning, we we are talking to my chef to basically deal with everything, deal with the liquor, deal with the food, be the be the one-stop caterer. So they would have their own stuff there, but then, yeah, once if we start doing events and that, then it would be just us, correct? We would take on the responsibility and everything. We would not let anybody else serve, correct? We would, we would be doing that ourselves.
Okay. And and you're okay with that being in the, I think that might be part of the liquor license, I'm not sure, but I just want to, wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, we were going to go just for a regular liquor license to be able to serve, correct, you know, full, full bar menu.
Okay, cool.
All right, thanks.
Anyone, anyone else?
Yeah, I've got one question. You had mentioned Stan's Lot. I don't know what is Stan's Lot, so what are you referring to?
So right directly south of the canal there, there's a parking that is on my path, that's behind the uh, the blue, I used to call it the blue building. I don't know if you're right on it, right along the, up, here we go, yeah. So if you look directly south of the canal, you see the three buildings and then there's a parking lot behind them. That's what Pat's, you got a pointer there?
Oh, Pat Stan's Lot, is that what you're referring to, the one behind? Okay, okay, I got it then. Thank you.
And it's convenient, so.
Yep, now I understand what you're talking, all right.
To the north of your property, or that's actually your property, you're talking about outdoor banquets, what exactly are you going to, are you enclosing that or are you leaving it open?
We, so we sent a few pictures of kind of like just putting either a little A-frame structure with no walls or a pergola. We do want to put a roof on it. We were, what our goal is to have wedding ceremonies out there, so we would it would start, if you're looking at that picture there, where you see the white roof on the left, so we would start pretty much where the gray roof starts and go to the to the east. Yep, so we would go to the east there, probably maybe fifty feet, and then go about twenty-five feet out from the building and be able to basically have a wrap cover of of planters, vegetation, something to kind of screen it off, and then we our goal is to do like wedding ceremonies there and then also have outdoor one ten was very famous, well, then that brought up smoking, I mean, yeah, they can go out there and smoke and outdoor seating, obviously now is 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 high priority.
Grapevines and a winery, yeah.
Yeah. So that's our, that's our intent. We still want to have room to be able to get right at the end of my property that that ties into the post office to get leave ten foot there, so we still get deliveries and garbage from the back area there. Because there's an old red door and there's also recycling containers out there, so. But we have not done the plans for that yet, unfortunately. That's kind of our next, after we get this running, then we'll invest in that.
That's all I got.
Okay, anyone else? Does anyone, anyone have an issue with this concept going downtown, specific to Jerry's project?
Mayor, I don't have an issue particular to this issue. I think it's good. As as Dave did, I do think we we still have some options that we need to investigate for additional parking period. So we need to keep that on, we need to keep that on our agenda.
Yeah, I think in Janelle's downtown focus meeting, we were actually talking about certain spots and you know, there's that property to the east there closer to, you know, the the sanitation facility, there's you know, that maybe we could work with M W R D on.
Right.
You know, I I agree, I think there are some definite you know, possibilities.
I I certainly hope we have the problem, but we need to be ahead of it to thinking about it and not playing catch-up, so, great.
Yeah, hey, I I just thought I'm on that point as well of the parking. I I know in the lost parking garage, a lot of the residents are not parking in resident spots, they're parking in regular spots. So it would seem to me that we we would be benefi- we would benefit us to resolve that issue before this business opens. And one way is to change where the resident parking is, because I think they try to get by the this the staircase slash elevators, so depending on the floor they're on. So I don't know, I don't know exactly how they're allocated, but I I know I've been in there where lots of resident spots are open and public spots are not. And and I think, who's the homeowner association in there, president?
I'm not sure if it matters or not, but I can, I can talk to him and just see what he says.
But I I know he But I, I know he had come to a meeting and said the same thing, that a lot of people are not using the, the, the appropriate spots. So.
How is that? I, I guess, you know, I never, I, I just assumed they had stickers. So is there designated stalls, you're saying, Dave?
Yeah. They do have stickers, John. Um, and there's dozen, there's stalls that are, are, that say something like loft parking or something. I don't know exactly what it is. So.
I guess I've never seen that.
Yeah, if they, so if they end up parking in a regular spot, then they're taking two spots, right?
Yeah.
Cause, cause we're, you know, regular, like Jerry's people can't go into those spots.
Yeah, there's, there's about every, I've gone through there probably about six times in the last, uh, two months, just to, uh, do a count. And it's. Over half of the people park in non-resident spots that are residents, because this is at every time of the day you go, you can, so. Um, it would be either nice to make them all non-resident spots and, and, and unless there becomes a problem, they could, they, they can. You, you may want to talk to them how they want to work it out, but it is, there's still always at least about a hundred to a hundred and twenty spots available in non-resident spots. Every time I go through there, but it looks like at least half the people park in non-resident spots.
And when we have events, it's the events. I've, I've, I've gone down there on events like, um, some high school events and stuff like that. And that lots. The regular spots are full and you've got all the resident spots open. So. And it's the events that really, that lot, that gets pretty full. I don't know, John, if you ever parked over there during any of those events, but the, the garage does get full on events.
Yeah, and the only time I've seen it is, you know, like, you know, for the high school event. I mean, but. I go through that, I was telling George, I would count, I've never seen more than. Um, at least I've never counted more than sixty cars in that parking lot ever.
Yeah, look where they're parking.
Yeah, no, I, I think you're right, Dave. I mean, to me, you know, you know, and, and this is without hearing from them, they'll probably totally disagree, but. Why not just have a sticker and make every lot, you know, uh, not a free for all, but you know, it's, it's open. Um, but again, we just have to work with them on that. So I agree, Dave, maybe we. We touch base with Matt or whoever, you know, Janelle, if you reach out, maybe just kind of share kind of what we're just talking about here.
Yeah, I'll talk to Matt. I mean, to me, why me just, or just let them pick their spots, you know, like whatever. Just if that's. What they're doing right now, picking their own spot anyways, then they should just claim it and call it a day. I'll talk to Matt.
Yep. Alright, uh, Chief, anything on your end at all? Any, um, or real quick, last question promised Jerry. What, what's the capacity? You think of, of the, the, the two buildings?
Uh, we're at a little bit under four hundred, I think, at this time. I think we're like at three ninety-five or something.
Okay.
Uh, no, Mayor, I, I, I have no concerns right now. It's just, I, I, I agree with you with the congestion and the, uh, the events down there that, uh. Parking in that intersection, especially on Friday and Saturday evenings when the forge gets, uh, going, is gonna be egressing. Kind of right into that area at the time that, you know, a wedding might be starting. So that's just something that collectively we gotta, we gotta figure out.
Okay. And then we, we have talked in, in public meetings before about, I think. I don't know if it's you, Chief, or maybe I thought someone told, someone mentioned, you know, that, that making. Um, you know, um, front street one way. Um, and, and I agree, Dave, probably westbound is, is the right. You know, direction. Um, any, that's just, and we, we don't need to talk about it now. That's not where we're on this meeting, but we should probably think, put, put some more thought to that. To see if, if we want to do that. And Ralph, obviously you probably want to weigh in on that as well. So George, probably a topic for another.
You know, actually, we're gonna, we're gonna touch on it a little bit later tonight, even if we get there, uh. Um, just an update, everybody on the, um, the study we're partnering with CMAP on. It's gonna look at parking civic space. We've asked them to broaden their scope to also look at. Traffic circulation in the downtown. Um, you know, I know we, we've come up with that issue before and. I don't know if, if, if it's a problem in, in a solution in search of a problem or however the saying goes, but, um, we need to look at it comprehensively and. And Chief, on the same issue on the parking in the laws, we've talked about it before. I think that the homeowners want us to, is asking us to solve their problem and we'll get in there and help, right, Chief? But every time you've gone to a meeting, they don't agree on the solution. They want to, so.
Um, yeah, I, I've offered that concept to them at least three times, uh, to the HOA and the Management Association. And ask them, give us a plan. You know, we don't care where the spots that they choose are. We'll, we'll put them where they want and. They, uh, don't want to, uh, change the, uh, current status, I think, is.
Yeah.
They like their freedom from having their spot and parking. We may have to consider the traffic, uh, pattern also of the new building that will go up on Peterson's property too, because we're gonna have. We're gonna have parking underground there. We're gonna have parking on the street. So we, we have to consider that also in this planning.
And it, and it's good time right now, looking at all of it. I mean, uh, Jerry, you may have mentioned, when, when do you, uh, plan to have your first kind of wedding or first event?
We're shooting for April, April next. Um, but we're not gonna take any, uh, what do they call it? Uh. Reservations until we get a little further along in our, in our permanent process, in our, in our construction process. So we, we, we are shooting for April. So hopefully we can do that.
You're banking on that vaccine, right, Jerry?
Something.
Alright, um, with, with that being said, uh, uh, again, Jerry, thanks, uh, for your continued, um. Potential investment in town. I, I think you're hearing from all of us, um, exciting opportunity and. Um, let's, uh, hopefully let's make it work.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next up, we have the Lamont, uh, police pension update. Chris, are you gonna kick that off?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so a part of, um, the, uh, tax levy process and the end of the year process and per state statute. The police pension fund is required to present to the board, the municipal compliance report, a tax levy record, a request and the actuary report. Um, I mentioned before, April was a terrible, terrible month. Um, and, uh. According to our fiscal year end, we had to have the, all the basically reports were ran as of April thirtieth. So, um, the investment return for the pension fund was a negative two point two percent. Um, I do want to mention that, um, it has come back since then. Um, so it, it, it's a lot better now than it was back then. Um, and then the tax levy requirement, um, per the reports are a million oh thirty-eight. However, um. Historically, the board has been, uh, the village board has been very accommodating and, um, giving the pension board. Um, additional funds for their administration expenses. Um, so the request is one point one million. I'm Brian Contract. He is the president of the pension board. Here to answer any questions, um, any thoughts, concerns, but, um, i- if you see the tax levy. Um, I did put in that one point one million. So if the board changes, I can always change the, the request. Um, but that's request right now.
Take myself off of you. Thanks, Chris. Um, so. Are we going to? Talk about the, the status of the fund is, or, or do you have someone here to discuss that? Or are we just?
Yeah.
Cause as of right now, we have what thirty million in, as a liability with only twenty million of assets roughly. So we have ten million that is unfunded, correct?
Correct. The tax and yeah, and then.
It's about nine point six million.
Yeah, I mean round numbers.
It's gone. Yeah, it's in like, um, the last quarterly report we received, we did have, um. Come back like around five percent, right, Brian? Unless I'm wrong.
Yeah, so I, I, I pulled the dashboard and, uh, right now our current managed market value is twenty-one million, three hundred and thirty thousand. On the, uh, on April thirtieth, we were at eighteen million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand. So, uh, you know, we've, we've come back, uh, you know, three million. At, at, at the bottom of the Corona market, when the market crashed, we were down three point eight million dollars. So it's, uh, it, it hasn't come back completely, but it's, it's on its way back up. It's just, uh. You know, with the, uh, with the timing of the, of, of the Corona and how the market was reacting in the end of our fiscal year, it just. It's, it's a one day snapshot, um, that, that kind of gave us a, a bad, a bad looking on it this year.
And. Obviously I beat this drum so many times, you know, as far as wanting our, our police pension fully funded. Um, Brian, just, I mean, I, I just want to know, am, am I the only one that's half crazy? I mean, what, 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 how do you guys feel on your side? What would you guys rather have? You, you know, as far as if, if, because there's limited resources, what is the, where should we be putting our resources?
Well, you know, we're, we're, we're top fifteen percent of pension funds in, in, in the state. Um, you know, I know it's Illinois, but the, the pension fund. And the, the way that Illinois has structured the article three and article four pension funds is just not been beneficial to. These funds over the, the long term. You know, now we're, we're, we're working on assumptions that in twenty years, we need to be a hundred percent funded. However, there's already talk about it in the legislature that we're gonna kick the can another ten years down the road and put the, you know, the ninety percent funded that the state's gonna require to twenty fifty. Well, the longer you kick it down the road, the longer, you know, the, the bigger that unfunded liability is going to be. IMRF uses a rolling, uh, a rolling amortization schedule, whereas, you know, the, the article three pension fund. We just pick an arbitrary number every time the legislature wants to do that. So our numbers are constantly changing. You know, these funds, these funds are, are not, they don't have an end date. So that, you know, it, uh, that always plays into it too. Um, you know, and, and just the, the regulations that have been on these funds in the past, as far as where you can invest your assets and, and everything has, has been detrimental. Um, you know, but it's, it's, uh, it's a shame that, that nowadays our police officers have to pay for the failures of. Past legislation by the state and, uh, you know, and that's, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. Now we, we also have a couple of other things coming up with this consolidation, which there's a lot of unanswered questions about. Uh, you know, within the next, uh, twenty or so months, the, the state's going to come in and take our money and manage our money. I don't have, I personally don't have a lot of faith in that. Uh, there's, there's not been any, um. There's, there's a lot of unanswered questions of how they're actually going to do that, how they're going to maintain. Our Village of Lamont pension fund account within this account of three hundred and thirty some odd other funds. And how do we get our returns? How do we administer our benefits? Uh, you know. We have no say so in, in, in what's going to happen with our money. You know, so that's, uh, that's another unknown that's, that's coming our way as far as, as far as our pension fund goes.
Got it. So if there's one point one million dollars, and this is a loaded question and I'm not, my, this is, I'm, I'm, it's more to the board. It's, it's. Hey, we got one point one million dollars. Do we take and fund the police pension one point one million? Or do we only fund it, you know, one point one less X and, 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 you know. Put other funds towards the, the police department, either it be additional bodies or, or equipment. I mean, those are the. You know, th- those are the questions we have to. Uh, balance, you know, as a board. And the reason why I asked earlier, Brian, you know, because we put in one point one million every year. We, we put in what we should be putting in. Obviously this is a different year, but every year the, the actual liability grows. So the percentage might go up, but the liability grows in, in pure dollars. And so we're really never making up any ground. I think one year we made up maybe a little bit of ground when we went up ten percent. So. Where I'm getting at is, is, hey, do we take one point one million and, and just go with, hey, you know what? Let's be the, 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 the tallest short guy in the state and, you know, just let that liability continue to grow because we're in good shape. And just let that liability continue to grow, albeit at a faster rate. But then use other funds to hire, you know, other police and fund the police. That's, that's what I want to know. I mean, would you guys prefer that as a? As, as a department?
Well, well, as a department, yes. I mean, we need, we need the resources and here's how it kind of, kind of plays out. We're, we, we're, we're about to pass a point of where we're gonna have more. Uh, inactive members collecting pension funds than we're gonna have active members on the actual police department. And that's based on, you know, on, on the maturity of the fund. And, you know, and that poses some risks. You're, you're losing out on your, your employee contribution, which is, you know, which is a good portion. And it's nine point nine one percent of your payroll that goes in there. And the village, i- i- if you had, if you were a hundred percent funded. You would have about a twelve percent normal cost from the village. Then you'd get the other, you'd get the other nine point nine one percent. Uh, from the employees. But if you don't have enough employees, you know, putting in there, that's gonna raise the normal cost for the village. You know, there, there's, there, there's a little bit of it in the system that, that the current members, the current active members are paying. Basically a portion of the retiree members' benefits. And it's kind of, you know, a, a game in that sort of sense.
Yeah, again.
Is that the way it's supposed to work?
Card game. No, I.
Well, you also.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's right. I think you called it right. I mean, that, that's what we're getting at. Do we just let the? Because having one member come in, that's nine thousand dollars a year. That's what you put in, one member. So. That in the big scheme of things is not, you know, a big investment, you know? I mean, that, that is. You know, uh, very minute. That's where we're getting at. When we're talking investing, you know, a fully loaded police officer with all in. Healthcare with a family, you, you get to a hundred thou- I mean, you're, you're, you're talking about an investment of a hundred and fifty thousand. So. You know, as a board, do we just shortchange the one point one million and hire? Two additional police officers and just short pay three hundred thousand a year? I mean, that's, that's what we want to. Um, I guess debate as a board, but what we're looking for is some direction from, from the. You know, from the department as well.
Uh, and, and so I can, I could speak a little bit to that, you know? So our, our, our recommended contribution is, is one million thirty-eight thousand. So the statutory minimum contribution is gonna be seven ninety-five, two oh seven. So somewhere in there, the state says, you know, based on their numbers, you gotta be somewhere within there. Obviously, we, you know. It, we're trying, as a pension board, we're trying to be, you know, we're fiduciaries and we're trying to be, you know, financially responsible. Right now I'm talking to you as the pension board president. I have to wear the other hat when I go to work as a, as a sergeant on the street. So. Right now I have to talk to you as a fiduciary. So I'm gonna tell you that, yes, I want, you know, I want as much money as you guys can possibly give us. And that's going to save you money in the long term, because the longer term we have this, you know, this money invested, the more potential we have for, for returns. So, uh, you know, as, as a, as a police sergeant, I can also tell you that we run risks of if, if we had one person get disabled because we didn't have. The proper staffing or something like that, then that's going to affect our pension and, and, and even a highly, you know, more highly negative way. So.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, and I, and, and again, I, I don't, you know, Brian, I'm not putting you on the spot to answer for the department. I'm just tossing these questions out there, you know, because. I, I, and, and, um, so I think. One of the things we talked about, you know, as a board, um, this is directed to the board members, is that, hey. You know, obviously we're, we're underfunded, you know, wha- whatever it is. I'm calling it round numbers, ten million. It might be down additional two or three million from. From the market high, but each year it continues to grow in pure dollars. Um, and. I think one of the, 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 the ideas was, hey, we continue to pay down our debt. Our long-term debt, I think we make Chris some great strides in the next four or five years. Um, where we, I, I mean, you know, I think we cut it significantly, uh, over four or five years if we don't take on new debt. And potentially what we do is we, we then, at that time. Don't adjust our spending levels, but we, instead of diverting monies towards outstanding bonds, because these bonds will be paid off. We take that excess and we continue, uh, to, to fund the, the police pension liability. And, and what I'm looking at is, is. Maybe potentially as a board, we have some sort of long-term policy or five-year plan where we commit to that so that when this board is done. You know, if, 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 if we all leave, you know, within five or six years. At least there's a policy in place that will say, hey, you know what? It, this, you know, yeah, we've paid off our debt. Let's go get more. No, we still have police pension. I. What I'm trying to do is, is get it some sort of long-term. Plan in place to, to fully fund not only our, our bond debt, but our pension debt as well. And that includes both police, because we cannot forget IMRF. You know, granted, you know, they do a great job on their end. They're, they're ninety percent. It's still unfunded by two or three million, I believe. So. Um, you know, I, I, I think that's something we, we might want to look at, Chris, which is. Why don't you take a look at in the next, you know, maybe it's a ten-year plan? If we don't take on new. If we don't take on new debt, what is the, the, the extra bandwidth we can make towards paying off additional police pension debt?
Yeah, I can do that. That's no problem whatsoever.
And I think as a board, another option is, is we go to, and this is something we talked about before, is to have a, um, you know, a, a a question, you know, at an election, you know, advisory question where we say, hey, public, we're contemplating a, a ten million dollar, you know, bond. This, this money's going to be used to fully fund police pensions so that the money could be put to work. We can stop falling behind. Because every year, if we're supposed to make seven percent and we got a ten million dollar negative liability, we're losing seven hundred thousand dollars in investment because we're not, we're not getting that return. So we're, you know, potentially, right now, we're going to lose seven hundred thousand a year. Uh, in, in pure, you know, even if we hit the seven percent, we're gonna, we're gonna lose seven hundred thousand in pure dollars, which is unsustainable. It's like a credit card, right? Um, so, yeah, let's take a look at that. Uh, and again, Brian, thanks, um, for, um, you know, doing what you do on the board, and more importantly, thanks for, you know, what you do on the force as well. So we appreciate.
Appreciate that.
Um, any other questions or comments?
I've got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
Are we going to sustain the same number of officers as we have right now, or is there, through attrition, are we going to lose any?
All right. So right now, we have one officer who's planning on retiring in, uh, January. So I, I'm not sure what the status is on, uh, if we're going to rehire or, or not.
Yeah, we're working through it. Chief, you want to talk about the process and, and, and talking about where we are at minimum staffing? We are, we are rehiring. Um, but that, there's about a nine-month lag, right, chief, with, with getting someone to academy?
Right. So if we hire somebody in January when that officer retires and, and the person does not have previous police experience, um, he'll go into the academy and by the time he gets off his FTO program, it'll be about nine months from now. If we take somebody that has previous, uh, academy experience, uh, he can go through a modified FTO program and be available fairly fast. So we're looking at our list right now. We do have a couple candidates that may fit that mold. I remember when we gave this last, uh, list, we only had forty-one people show up for the test, so it's a, it's a thin list. And a lot of those folks have been hired at other places. So we're looking at that now and hopefully we can get some decent candidates. But, uh, that, that position, uh, we've had authorization from, uh, the village administrator to, uh, to a place. And so we're going through the process now with the police commission to rehire, uh, that one officer. And the, the document that George had sent out, uh, about a week and a half ago, was a request to try to reestablish, uh, two positions for the, uh, the power shift, uh, cars in order to give us some resilience, uh, for officers that, uh, leave. Uh, just in this last week, we had one officer, um, that, uh, had his father die and was, was off on, on time. And we had another officer on light duty because of a, a, uh, medical, uh, issue. And we don't have the staffing to cover those shifts when, because we're at minimum staffing all the time now. So those two officers, additional officers, would just give us the flexibility to plug in as we have, uh, um, issues. We just, uh, just this weekend, we had one of our, uh, sergeants, uh, who's a spouse tested positive. And, uh, luckily, we got the results back today that he didn't, because we, we wouldn't know what we were going to do to, uh, cover his position if he had to be, uh, quarantined for fourteen days.
Okay, um, thanks, chief. Um, any other questions or comments? Obviously, we're, we're looking to, um, to fund this, um, in, in the total is, again, one point one million. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes.
Um, I think, I'm definitely a go funding one, one million. Does anyone else have an issue? Any of the trustees?
I, I do not, it's Dave.
Awesome.
No issue for me.
Brian, I think, yeah, Brian, I think, uh, you got unanimous support at, at one point one million. Now, obviously, we, we had extra money last year, uh, or the year before, we, we more than funded what we were supposed to. So, um, you can go back to the board and, and again, reiterate, you know, it, it is a, um, you know, it is a major point of importance, you know, with this board, that we continue to keep that funded. And just because we're seventy percent, I think, uh, you guys want to get more than seventy percent of, of, of your benefits. So I think a hundred percent is, is always what we're striving for. So just pass that along if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. And we, you know, we appreciate the board's, uh, you know, support in the matter. Like I said, it's, uh, it's, it's a, it's a tricky time. You know, there, there were some other factors that went into, uh, why this number went up so much is, you know, this, this consolidation legislation actually, uh, they actually improved the benefits for the tier-two employees as far as how they calculate their final average salary. So that had some, uh, we basically had to play catch-up for nine years, uh, since they passed the tier-two legislation. And, uh, so I, you know, every year I, I get this actuary and I, I dread it, but I'm, I'm hoping that one of these years, it actually starts coming down, uh, and start going the right direction. So I can come in front of the board and, uh, and say, hey, look, we're going to actually save money this year. So the quicker we get to that hundred percent, the, the, you know, then we're going to look at maybe a half a million dollars you'll need, or, or six hundred thousand. So we, you know, pension board appreciates the, the cooperation from, from you guys. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. And, uh, yeah, we're, it's, it's always going to get worse until we get that, till we fill that ten million dollar gap. So, um, again. Yes.
One of the, uh, uh, consequences of this consolidation, um, as, as it gets ramped up, is the, uh, um, this process of going before the board every year for the levy, um, that, uh, it will be much more similar to IMRF. Those, there will still be a levy every year, but it'll be, uh, dic- the assumptions will be dictated by that consolidated board. They'll tell you what your a- uh, assumptions are for return. They'll tell you what the, uh, the ramp, uh, uh, period is. They'll tell you what the funding level, uh, goal is. And, and, um, for, for this board, it'll be much easier. They'll, they'll, they'll say that, you know, the levy request is, um, you know, what it is this year. And, and some of the, uh, the guesswork will be out of it, uh, i- i- if it works like they're anticipating it will.
Well, and I, I gotta kind of speak to that, because I just, I just went through a four-hour, uh, consolidation training, uh, two weeks ago. And, uh, right now, the, 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 the permanent board hasn't been set yet. And the, the interim board that's working on it right now is kind of deferring some of these, uh, some of these, um, these tasks to when the permanent board is actually, and the elected boards actually get sat. And there, there's some concerns that, that are out there that, uh, you know, once they come up with the, the assumptions they're going to use, uh, they, you know, because they can go one way or the other. They can go, okay, here, we're going to use a minimum funding model, where we're going to give the actuary to each village, and it's going to be your minimum statutory contribution here. This is what you have to, to do. Or they may go somewhere in the middle and use something like we're using, you know, where our funding method and our investment policy. Or, you know, they can, they can go complete opposite and say, here, you need, you know, we recommend that you're putting in X amount of dollars to, to get this pension debt that paid down in the next five years or something. So that, that stuff has not been written into any of the rules or, or the policies or anything like that. Um, now, there, there was talk about, uh, you know, the, the board, you know, the, the, the pension boards are still going to, to remain, and we're still going to be fiduciaries. So they're based, we're going to have to take a look at it as a pension board, and once the, the, the consolidated board comes out with their, what assumptions they're going to use and what kind of funding models and, and everything like that, where we may want to get our own actuary report for the first couple of years to see if it jibes with, uh, what the, what the state's going to tell us to do. Um, because it's not going to, it's not going to be like IMRF where it's a mandatory thing. They're going to have a statutory minimum, but it's not going to be as far, as close to IMRF as, here, you owe us this much money. It's, it's still going to be discretionary as far as what the village board wants to allocate and what, uh, what the, the police pension board is going to ask for. So there is still a lot of questions on that, because a lot of that stuff hasn't been figured out. And that's what they're, they're working on right now is, as far as a consolidated board. Now, that permanent board will be set, uh, in January. So we should know a little bit more coming up in the first few months of, of next year.
All right. Sounds great. Brian, thanks again, buddy. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. Okay. All right. Uh, next up, we got, um, the property tax levy for this year. Chris, you want to take that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, so we just discussed the police pension levy, which is one component of it. Um, today, we're going to start the, basically, the truth in taxation, the levy estimates for twenty twenty property taxes. It has to be levied by the last Tuesday of the year, and it will be for next year's, uh, bills that go out. And according to, you know, we're a non-home rule community, so we are subject to, um, to the property, the limitation law. Right now, it is two point three percent. Um, is what we can levy, um, and then, um, we can put growth on top of that. So if you look at the, um, the, the calculation that I did, I, what I do is I pull, so here's historically, how much new growth have we, we've been very fortunate. We've always had new growth. Or when we expired our downtown TIF, if you see in twenty fifteen, we, um, and we can always levy that, that additional amount for the growth. So we've been very, very fortunate over the years to have, uh, building permits and, and the TIFs have been absolutely have always been very good for the, for the, for the village. Um, so if you look at the next chart, what I do is I pull the building permits, because, um, the building permits, um, tell us how many grow, what kind of growth we have. And I usually pull in the twenty nineteen building permits, because Cook County will take those together and then, and use it. So I know this year, in twenty twenty, we've actually had a lot of building permits, but those will go for twenty twenty-one. So in twenty nineteen, between commercial, residential, and then I usually put other miscellaneous, I'm anticipating the growth of an EAV of twelve point two million, and that's about one point eight percent. So between the one point eight percent and the two point three, that's about four point one percent is what we can increase in our levy amount in the extension. And, uh, George, if you want to go to the next table. So what I do is I take it, so here it is, every single year, the tax extension. So for twenty twenty, um, you can see that I put in the police pension of one point one million. Um, I put in, um, IMRF, we haven't received the mi- the, the amount yet, because they're based on a calendar year. Um, so I, I basically put in the pensions amount, looks at it, look at our fund balances, what they're required, put in the pensions amount. And then, um, I work backwards, and basically, the corporate levy is the one that gets the rest of all the money. First, we do what statutory, what we have to, what we have to, uh, levy. So right now, the anticipated levy is going to be around three point eight percent, uh, three point eight million dollars, which is a little bit over four percent increase, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over last year. Um, and then I, I divvied it out. Um, so this is the start of it. Um, then we will have our public hearing, um, even though we don't have to, but for transparencies, we do a public hearing. And then, um, do all the ordinances in December and file it the last Tuesday in December.
Thanks, Chris. So, Chris, um, if I was talking to, um, just, you know, we're, you know, a, an everyday resident and explaining this, bottom line is, is that our, if, if we had zero growth in town, our tax levy, everyone's bill would go up two point three percent, um, if we had zero growth, correct?
And if their, uh, if their property value did not go up, yes.
Yeah, if everyone's property, yes, stayed the same. So, and, and, and the reason why it has to go up two point three percent is because on the last, um, page you just showed there for the levy, if you look from year to year, we have significant, um, increases, um, specific to our, our pensions. Um, you know, up, upwards of ten per- this went up eighteen percent, but it's usually ten percent. But then, just in general, you got corporate, um, salaries, you know, so you're looking at two point three percent. That's there to justify, you know, just those, those major increases, our pensions being the number one driver. And then the additional one point, um, I guess it'd be what, one point eight percent is due to growth, which means we have additional services or whatever it may be, roads to plow, um, more, you know, um, you know, just more services. So I guess that, is that the right way of looking at it?
Right, more public, public safety and public work services, correct. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Got it, got it. So really, if everything, if we had no growth, everyone's house value stayed the same, everyone's bill would, would, would theoretically go up two point, two point three percent. And that's mainly due to inflation, uh, related to either these salaries, gas, whatever it may be, um, with the biggest driver being our pensions.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. All right. Um, with that being said, any other questions or comments for Chris?
None for me.
Anyone good? Okay, I think, um, Chris, uh, I, I don't think anyone has any problems. If you do, let Chris know right now if you have any problems with their calculation. Otherwise, I, I, I think we're going to move forward with this.
Okay, so then the next.
Forward with this.
Yes, thank you. And then the next step would be the public hearing will be on November the ninth, and then the first meeting in December, we will pass all the tax abatements, because debt service is never on the property taxes. So we'll do the abatements as well as levy this tax. So thank you.
Just a question. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Workman's comp, what, what brings, what brings workman's comp down to, to seventeen thousand from a hundred thousand in twenty thirteen?
Yeah, actually, the workers' comp is, is more the in- insurance. And then if we have anybody, um, on workers' comp, we thi- we have, um, so it's a two-part. It's the insurance plus that. We've had, basically, um, we've been very fortunate, and we don't have as many workers' comp claims. But in essence as well, if we do have it, we have the insurance and plus the corporate levy would take care of that. So this is a line item that kind of, you know, I'm, I've been kind of reducing it to offset the pensions. Um, but I have been, but we have been very fortunate as well as not having a lot of worker comp claims.
Great, thanks, Chris. Any, any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Chris. Um, do you want to move forward, uh, with the revenue and expenditure forecast?
Yes. So George has a slide presentation.
Hold on just a second.
Thought it was easier than to look at some charts and all that. So I put, I put it together in a slide presentation real quick. Okay. So, um, so basically, where we're at right now, um, if you want to go to page two. There we go. Okay. So where we are in cases are increasing COVID, um, we have continued increases. May, we may have, have some control measures. Cold weather is limiting our outdoor dining. So when I'm looking at the forecast, where we are now, where we are going to be, um, or where we're predicted, and where we're supposed to be, I'm kind of looking at COVID cases, where the outdoor dining, so, you know, that retail sales tax will most likely start going down as the weather gets colder and we don't have outdoor dining. Um, the CARES Act, uh, funding, we did receive, uh, we, we did receive word today that they're getting ready to, Cook County is to, um, give us our allocation. I put in the, um, the request and the grant on nine-two. So it looks like we, we should be getting it fairly shortly. Um, FEMA, um, November first is when I'm, um, going to submit all our expenditures. And those are like our, um, our, um, expenditures for like all our PPE, um, all our, um, safety, uh, plexiglasses in between, all our safety measures that we had put in. I put, I'm putting in for FEMA a re- reimbursement. And then we're starting our, uh, capital improvements program for the FY twenty-two. I can't believe we're try- we're starting fiscal year twenty-two budget process. That's where we are, that's where we are right now, just kind of what we're looking at. So on the next one is the state shared revenues. So if you look at the state shared revenues and, um, the charts that I gave you right now, so those are, these are the state sales tax, our portion that we received. So the one percent that we received. Right now, we're about three point seven percent above budget, budget projections. And, um, the reason why, you know, I did budget ten percent lower than last year. So I did do a ten percent lower, but we are three point seven percent above budget projections. But please remember that these are state sales tax, are, you know, we only received, But please remember that these are state sales tax, are, you know, we only received uh, May through July, right now, the distribution. So October was July's sales. Uh, non-home rule sales tax, we're about twenty percent above project budget projections. And then the state income tax, and that is because it went to the following fiscal year. We're fifty-five percent above per budget projections, but that was because the filing date was was delayed. Plus, I reduced the budget by over twenty-five percent from fiscal year twenty because of the unemployment rate. And we still are fortunate where we have, um, where the CARES Act gave some money. And our, the, it hasn't really trickled down yet. So I do wanna put that in. Motor fuel, we're about one point two percent below projections, which is not bad at all. We did project that. And then local use tax, of course, because of internet sales, and that has skyrocketed, we're about twenty-five percent above projections. So in essence, and I I, you've heard me say before, the sales tax has really saved us because we have three grocery stores here in town. We have um, with the grocery stores, we have a lot of commercial, um, so those, you know, your mulch sales, your your other um, the concrete sales, those have basically really helped us. We don't have the convention centers. We don't have the big boxes like the IKEAs or and that. So if you hear that, like in Schaumburg, they're, they receive much less. But we have, we have stores that stayed open during the COVID because they had, they were groceries, or they were home improvement. Um, we had the Target stay open. So anyway, so you see the trends here between income sta, and income tax, and you can see the spike. Normally, we have the spike in May, which is accrued in the fall, in the past fiscal year. We normally have that spike, but now we had it in August instead. It wasn't as big of a spike as we normally have, but we did have the spike in August. And then the retail sales tax, as you see, the lower one is the non-home rule sales. So um, and then the the higher one, the higher one is the is the retail sales tax for for this year. So for twenty, for, and we go by calendar year on that. So we are doing okay. Um, but like I said, I'm I'm a little worried when it comes to the winter time. So I don't wanna say, oh, yeah, everything's okay. Don't worry about it. It's it's, we'll see what happens.
Chris, on the sales tech.
Well, I was just gonna say, uh, our revenues are based on uh, currently, we should be at forty percent. Wasn't that what I saw?
We should be. If you take it, it's a five months in, we should be around forty percent, yes.
Right, okay, okay. So on the short end of that is, while I'm pointing out, we got sixty percent to go.
Correct.
Yeah, and Chris, um, obviously, we're we're making it up with with our grocery stores. But uh, any uh, uh, Office Max is closed, Kohl's probably took a big hit during COVID, and we're still up. So that, that is uh, well, we're up above what we projected, so at least that is is all good news. You mentioned earlier that the non-home rule sales tax was up twenty percent versus, I think, three percent for just the sales tax. So that that non-home rule tax, that goes strictly to our capital expenditures. Is that, is that correct?
And it's twenty percent above budget projections, and I reduced, I thought non-home rule was really gonna take a beating um, because of um, because of it, it's, you know, it's not your your groceries. It's 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 the nice to haves. Um, so I did, I did reduce that a lot more. So yes, so there. Um, originally, I always said it should be around a hundred thousand per month, and I think I budgeted around eighty-five thousand per month. And as you can see, it's, you know, I think only one month, July is the only month that it dipped below a hundred thousand.
Got it.
So is it safe to say then that what's happening is people are purchasing products in Lamont other than groceries? We're buying locally, which is why that's going up. So that might be a point, some point, uh, John, you might wanna bring up.
Yes.
No, absolutely.
And if that sales tax, you know, we watch it and everything, but because last year, and that was one of um, the reason, one of the, one of the promises from the referendum is not only for the projects, for the capital projects, it was also to increase the fund balances. Well, the fund balances did go up as well. So we have a really nice, and that's what I said also with the general fund, we have a healthy financial base. So um, you know, I can't like go completely away, but we have a good base where if something does happen, we'll we'll be okay. We've got a very good base.
Yeah, and I I think it goes without saying that, I mean, the fallout of COVID is, we're not out of the woods yet. Um, right, we, you know, we we have, you know, residents sitting at home, the hospitality, the the restaurant. I mean, there are jobs that are not potentially going to come back. Um, people, you know, we we've had, we've had the federal stimulus. So I think we need to continue to um, save for that rainy day. Uh, vaccine comes out next year, and we're out of the woods, and we're not in a recession. Then I think that's when we look at, okay, hey, is our fund balance too high? Let's, you know, make, you know, an additional like we did two years ago when we had additional monies. That's when we can potentially, you know, pay off uh, some of our liabilities, either, you know, most likely it being pension. But I I don't think, you know, as a board, we should be thinking we're out of the woods. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, correct.
Right, and my point, though, was uh, besides, you know, being fiscally, fiscally conservative, uh, I think it's also would be a good note to point out to the community that we under, we can see that they are buying locally, and we need to keep doing that through this winter.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. So, okay, so um, so basically, on this chart now, you can see, um, you know, our categories, what we budgeted, where we are year to date, and where we were last year. So um, and then the, I did kinda um, just take out, bust out basically in the intergovernmental revenues. There's a lot of revenues in there. So I kinda took out the major revenues where we are. So you can see the sales tax, you know, it's up about two thousand from last year, year to date. The income tax, even though we had that bump, it's, you know, it's it's in line with last year's. Now, because I reduced the budget, that's why we're we're within budget, because I reduced the budget heavily from last year. Um, local use tax, as you, as I said before, they're doing really well because of the internet sales. Video gaming, and you'll see in that amendment that, um, you know, we haven't had video gaming um, for almost two months of revenue, so it is a lot lower um, than we were last year, year to date. Um, and then just the reimbursements, but those are, then our expenditures go down, our reimbursements have gone down. And the reimbursements, a lot of them are, you know, we we um, for um, for special events, um, any of the football games and all that, we bill those out, so we don't have the reimbursements, but then we don't have the overtime. License and permits, um, you know, we we put in there, the year to date, there is, um, we, the um, the one that I know we we've done very well with license and permits. The the thing that's causing it to go a little lower, to be, to represent a lower, is um, our our uh, vehicle stickers, because we extended it through August first, so we had some people, you know, um, not pay until August first. We also waived the late fees, so there's not that many late fees in there. So there's other areas in license and permits that that have gone lower. It's not just the vehicle stickers, but it is lower on that. And then um, miscellaneous revenue, and then the property taxes. The property taxes, there's basically two components, or there's more in that, in the taxes. There's property taxes, plus there's your utility tax. And I looked, our telecommunications tax actually has gone is is a lot lower, and I have a budget amendment to lower that that tax. Um, and I believe when I'm like, do some research on that, I believe a lot has to do with um, with their um, the, they are giving due to COVID, um, the cost is lower, so they do that. Um, and then also, they have this broadband twenty twenty where um, some of these costs, um, Illinois passed some some ruling, some of these costs that that they were passing on with the modems and the um, and the equipment that they can no longer do it if you pay it, pay for the, if you rent it, and then you uh, pay it off. They uh, they were still charging you, so they couldn't do that. So there's some kinda aspects in there, so that that revenue has gone down. So I I do have to make an amendment on that.
So Chris, we we amended, or we adopted a a a a different budget from twenty-one based on COVID, which was the far column for the full twelve months, eleven point one eight five million. Um, year to date, we've collected five point six five million, which column two. But if you compare to last year, which is column four, we're actually at six point two million. And some of this might be timing, but the good news is, is we adopted, we're we're doing better than what we thought we would do because we took COVID into consideration. But in reality, if you look compared to last year, we're we're still, due to various reasons, we're still significantly behind almost ten percent of what we were last year. Is that, is that the takeaway from this?
Yes, mm-hmm. And you'll see, like, in license and permits, we're about sixty-nine percent. Um, and you're like, well, but we're lower than last year, but we did, um, and that is, we're putting in a budget amendment. But um, when Jason and I met and in March, you know, we're like, oh, wow, we we need to reduce. So we did reduce a lot of the building permits and um, and for fear that we were gonna go into a recession. So we have, we do have amendment to change that, but you are, you are correct. We we have only collected five point six million versus six point two the the previous year, so, or yeah, the year before, so that is correct.
And and um, I don't know if I missed it, but the taxes of property taxes, we're at one point seven. Last year, we were almost at two million. I- is that just a timing issue? We can make that up, or is there something permanent in there?
A portion of it, a portion of it is timing. Um, and then there is also, and we have an amendment on there, is the telecommunications. The telecommunications, I'm amending it down almost seventy-five thousand dollars. So the telecommunications is down, um, but really, a lot of it has to do with the property taxes as well.
Okay, so the telecommunication is in that that taxes line. Okay, got it. Okay. Any, any, go ahead, Chris.
Any other questions? Okay, so we look at the general fund expenditures, and like I said before, it's all kinda, it's all green. We're um, you know, we do, we do an excellent job controlling our costs. And um, a lot of the overtime, um, you know, for special events, we don't have. Um, we're just doing a really, a really good job maintaining our costs. So um, I'm not, as of right now, it it, you know, we're on the green, and we're we're doing well. The one item, we probably look like, what the heck, we're at one hundred and sixty-three percent. Um, and there is a budget amendment on that. That is because, and it's capital outlay, that is because some of the vehicles that we had in last year's budget, uh, the board approved the the um, the purchase order or the bid for it, um, some of them were police, uh, police vehicles, and I think one was a public works. We did not receive that equipment because due to COVID, they stopped basically production of all the police vehicles. And um, so a lot of those, that equipment actually um, came in this year. Um, and according to our accounting rules, we're on a cash basis on that. So even though I had a purchase order out there, um, we had to, we're recognizing it this year. So there is an amendment for that. So that is why we're at a hundred and sixty-three on that.
But the, we left the cash and the the fund balance to cover, correct?
Yes. And then the other one that's a hundred percent is the other fi, financing uses. That is all your debt transfer going out of the general fund into the debt service fund to pay for debt. So that's another reason why it's at a hundred percent. But everything else is is running on track or lower than anticipated.
So Chris, and and from a debt services perspective, do we pay it off? It want, do we pay it off annually, or is it a monthly payment?
We pay off twice a year. We pay, um, well, we actually pay ninety percent of our issuances are December first, are just interest, and then June first is interest and principal. Uh, we have one issue, I don't know why, but it was a January first interest and uh, July first uh, principal and interest. But normally, we do it tw, twice a year.
So uh, even though we're at a hundred percent here, are we on track to what you would expect?
Yeah, we just transfer, yeah, th, this is just to transfer money into the debt service fund. The debt service fund is it, yes, we're we're exactly, the debt service fund is a transfer in, we pay the debt service, and that's it. We don't have a lot of fun, we don't have any fund balance, maybe a, maybe a hundred, two hundred extra there. But that is just a transfer in and then out. So this is just the transfer over to the debt service fund to pay for for that.
So I understand that. But I guess my question, though, is, we accounted for this line item, and there's not a line item for debt services in general. This is the one that's covering it. So if I, if this, if I project this going out to the end of the year, I would be at two point two million for the financial uses. I'm just saying, are we, is this just front-loaded in the year?
I'm sorry, I missed, the the transfer is once. So it is only one point one million dollars is the transfer once.
Okay, so we're not doing anything else for the rest of the year?
Correct.
Uh, makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the proposed budget amendment is on the next, uh, is on the next uh, slide. And uh, like I I mentioned before, the utility tax, the telecommunications, we're we're proposing reduction. The income tax, I I just, I took it way too low. Um, so the the two hundred and twenty-four thousand will still be lower than what we've collected in the last couple of years, the budget for it. However, um, it's higher. I had, I had it way too low. Um, and then uh, the cannabis is, we talked, we really didn't talk too much about it. That's just our share um, that they give us um, from the state. So we're thinking about eleven, I didn't budget for that last year, so we're about eleven thousand dollars, where we we believe that's gonna be the revenue. The video gaming, I reduced it by only thirteen, thinking that it's gonna come back. Uh, thirteen thousand, it may have to go a little bit lower, depending what happens. And then the rest are like, building permits I mentioned before, that we we reduced it a little too much. Um, I do, the grants, that's your CARES, and the FEMA, in Will County, we received, you know, you receive it per person, and I think we have two people, so we've received like a hundred and twenty-three dollars from Will County. But the Cook County, a hundred and eighty-three, and then whatever we take, get from from FEMA, and then I reduce the other. So total increase in revenue, then that's the budget, would be three hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, and then we have some increase in expenditures um, that we've awarded, but we never did a budget amendment for. Um, and then we do have, we are proposing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a business grant program, and that's taking a portion of it from the CARES, from the Cook County. Um, we do think about fifty thousand dollars of PPE supplies, and we would divvy it up among all the departments. Um, and then it's about three hundred and seven thousand. So the expenditures increases, expenditures are gonna be less than increase in revenues. However, like I said, those contracts um, are gonna put us a little bit, but but we have the contracts for the for the for the vehicles and that. So the overall budget amendment is gonna be a little bit higher than three oh seven, but these are just expenditures that we talked about.
I have one question yet, Chris, on the uh, grants, the two hundred thousand. I know we applied for a hundred and eighty-three and whatever, seventeen and change. Have you been assured that that's coming in at this point? The hundred, yeah, I mean, we've always been waiting for the answer back.
Yes, the hundred and eighty-three thousand um, is our allocation from Cook County. So um, and I did submit it for the whole, the entire amount. I did receive word this morning, today. Um, they just wanted to verify where the information came from, and I basically said the ERP system. So I think, they're getting close to give us, give us that money. So the hundred and eighty-three is is, we will receive. The FEMA, um, I'm still collecting the costs, um, and then they will give us seventy-five percent. But they may go through them all and say, I don't know, this and that, and most of it's public safety PPE. So that one.
If it's fifty thousand, and they're giving us seventy-five percent of that, I mean, you're looking at thirty-five or so, so.
Yeah.
So you're still double, you would get double back of what you're claiming here, anyway. You're only claiming seventeen.
Yes, so that one is, yeah, I'm sure we'll get around seventeen. We're gonna get a little bit more, but the hundred and eighty-three, I know we will, we're safe.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, and then um, Okay, and then um, if you, the next, that's the general fund. And then we just have a couple other, other proposed budget amendments. Uh, the MFT, I had mentioned before, we re- we receive um, the rebuild Illinois um, distribution. I never budgeted for that. So that's a, um, and all I'm doing is putting it in as a revenue. So it's the seven hundred thousand dollars that we're supposed to be receiving. We've already received three hundred and fifty thousand of that. Um, so that will be revenue for, that's for future capital projects that has to run through the MFT guidelines. Um, the other ones that we, we, we spoke about already was the Walker Road Engineering, which is a, is our portion of that I dot project, and that was four hundred and ninety one thousand. We, we spoke about the cell tower lease, um, and that's eight hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And then we did discuss um, our portion of the expenditure for the Army Core Grant Project, um, which is over one point five million dollars of the project. Our share is four hundred and ninety one thousand, so that's the expenditure. So those are just a part of the budget amendment.
Hey, Chris, just a quick note on the rebuild Illinois MFT, there were some um, concerns or debate uh, whether or not that money could be used for simple resurfacing or larger projects. We will be able to spend it, we might end up wanting to get into fund balance, and we'll have a significant contribution for the McCarthy Road Project um, coming up next year that we can use that money for. So it will get spent um, in that project. Uh, the bike lane resurfacing project will be bid in February, and it'll get constructed in in twenty twenty one. So we'll, we'll find a project for that money.
So that, that's all I have on the slide presentation. Uh, there was one more, one more table in, in your packet and basically shows um, the adopted, um, the adopted budget, the amendment budget with the purchase orders. And those are basically contracts that we, that we had from last year. And then the proposed amendments that we just talked about and what the new budget would be.
Okay, so uh, we will adopt this new proposed um, amendment. I got, what do you call it, a?
It's the amended budget, the new amended budget, um, next, um, next, next week.
Um, I'm, I'm good with it. Anyone else have any other, or Chris, are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments regarding the uh, amendment?
Hey, I got one other note. This has nothing to do with the amendment. It has to do with a topic that came up in amendment, and this is more in line for uh, for Dave and Jason, the bu- and potentially the mayor, bike riders, Ron. That bike path coming around McCarthy, uh, recently, I was headed west on Porter. Uh, and a car came flying around the corner on McCor- McCarthy, headed north from the east right across from the school, you know, the old school, right on that curve. It just made me think. I, I really consider where you're going to put that bike path as it comes around the corner on McCarthy, or what we're going to do to prevent a car from pulling out at Porter when a bike comes around the corners going north. So I don't know how you guys are going to handle it. If you want to move it to the west side of the street there or something, but I, I remember bringing up Julia Street as a way to get down the hill. Um, I still think that might be a better route. But I, I think you really need to take a look at that corner uh, and the bike path.
Yeah, just real quick, maybe Jason's got a comment on it. The um, because where the road narrows there, it's, it's going to go to a, you know, it's going to go right onto the, to the street. What, what do they call it? It'll have a charrow. Um, but you're right, we, we need to talk about, do we want to, where do we want to head north? Do we want to head down Julia? We probably shouldn't send the bikers down Stephen is what you're
I know that was our plan, George, and and I'm just, like I said, I, I had to slam on my brakes because a car came around. And I'm just thinking, man, if somebody comes around on a bike and they're, they're unfamiliar with the area, and a car pulls out, they're going to run right in the side of the car. Because it's really a, a close uh, proximity there from the corner to Porter Street.
We have, we have an active transportation plan that I think uh, has designated bike routes. I think we should look at that because I'd be surprised if we didn't consider what we're doing there.
Okay, I, I just remember us talking about this a long time ago, Dave, and really hadn't thought about it since.
I think it's a good question.
But I know we're moving forward with this, and you guys would have a better handle on it, but you know, I just wanted to point it out. It was, it caught me off guard, and I immediately thought about the bike path. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I can't remember if we rotted it down there. I, I feel like we wouldn't have. I, I remember actually, Rick as well, having the conversation about alternate routes there, so.
Yep, okay.
But we should see what the, the plan has on there, because I know we did all the through, the bike streets.
Okay, I just meant to bring it up as a note to take a look at, so we don't forget it, or I don't forget to bring it up again, or whatever, so. Sorry, John, didn't mean to.
No, no, no problem.
No problems with the budget part.
No, I mean, and and um, the, the issue you brought up, obviously, you know, Ralph and George, why don't you guys just put that on your, your
Before the bid goes out, we will bring it back up and have a final recommendation, Ralph. We'll talk to you.
Yeah, just
For sure.
Okay, cool.
Got it.
All right, I think we're uh, we're in the home stretch here, uh, or more than the home stretch. So uh, last one is the, the small business assistance. Jason, are you taking the lead on that?
Yes, sir.
You're clicking.
I'm clicking. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, this is following on, on, on the heels of uh, Chris's report. We first started looking at um, using the uh, Cares money we're getting from Cook County to help our small business owners. I'm sure you've seen stories in other communities doing the same. Um, and uh, we're basically following the lead of, of what they're doing. So we're proposing to uh, spend uh, up to five thousand dollars per business as a grant for uh, PPP. Um, PPE, I'm sorry, that different acronym there. Uh, interior changes, you know, the, the acrylic and stuff like that, that we're seeing, and any winterization um, for outdoor operations. Um, uh, business would be required to spend at least a thousand dollars, uh, maximum more to five thousand. This is, uh, doesn't require any um, matching expenses. It would be a reimbursement though, so we'd want to see uh, receipts or something like that to uh, to prove that they, they spent those monies. Uh, with that, we'd also like to uh, get approval to spend some money that was in the budget. So we did budget for the business district grants and some of the TIF district grants that were in um, that were presented to the committee of the whole back in January. So these would include facade grants in our commercial zoning districts. Um, the policy then shows um, the ability to spend up to five thousand dollars in commercial districts. If it was a project that could be supported by the TIF, it would spend up to twenty five thousand dollars and would include uh, tangible improvements. So anything on the facade as well as uh, uh, life safety, such as fire sprinklers, accessibility, anything that stays with the building and improves the property values of the building. So those, uh, we'd like to get the okay to start spending. You know, we have a lot of business owners that were kind of waiting on it. You know, we've been um, promoting that we're doing another round of grants. And I'm glad that we did put it in the budget. Uh, we just, uh, once covid hit, we wanted to wait and see before we authorized uh, going out and, and spending any money on this. Um, I kind of redrafted the incentive policy that we looked at back in, back in January to also just include the, the TIF incentives. We're doing those now. You know, uh, we just discussed one with St. James, discussed one with Maribella. So I just wanted to make sure that uh, if anybody was looking at that document, they would see uh, what the minimum requirements are for, for those. So that's that. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm available and pulling Chris or, or George if needed.
Jason, I, I know just personally, when we first did the round of, of grants, it was cool to see. You know, people were painting, doing facades, they were, it, it, this is, again, this is all capital, capital improvements, correct?
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. Yeah, some of the communities, uh, it's a good point if we want to be clear. Some communities have used that cares money side for essentially anything that was eligible under PPP, the uh, payroll protection program. So that included payroll, rent, utilities, things like that. We're not going to allow any of those in, in our grant program. This will just be for, you know, tangible physical improvements. Uh, the only exception to that would be for any uh, protective equipment they would need to purchase to uh, you know, keep their business going.
And and there, there will be a grant program, so people will, or businesses will apply for those, correct?
Yeah, they would apply to the community development department. We would just, we'd use the same um, application that we used essentially for the uh, round of business district improvement grants that we did last year.
And it's all supported by receipts, correct? I mean, I, I, how did the, the, the original grant program go? I think you said it was very, very well received, and it went really smooth. And you could actually physically see quite a bit of investment going in. I mean, were, were there any issues at all?
No, uh, again, it's all reimbursement, so we're not giving anybody money to, you know, start a project. This is um, when it's finished, if it was in the present, you know, if it's in the historic district, and most of them are, they get the certificate of appropriateness. So we have the approval from the HPC. Uh, they go out and um, so with that, we share that approval with the property owner. Uh, they get a building permit. Uh, we did waive the permit fees for those grant. The grant winners, I guess, are, you know, selected grannies. And um, after final inspection, they send me an invoice that we uh, we review in house. And then I send a memo to the finance department approving the uh, the funds.
How do you, how do you keep track, uh? How do you make sure you don't have more applicants in the future than you have money available for? How do they know that what they're going to be reimbursed, you know? Okay, I think I'm going to get reimbursed thirty five hundred bucks, and now all of a sudden, you're out of money, you can only give me two grand. How do we do that?
Yeah, before any project started, we looked at them all. Actually, last time for the business district grants, we, we were oversubscribed. And we wanted to, so we were faced with the decision to either award some and not award others or kind of share the wealth. So we decided
Or something?
Yeah, well, basically, we took how many, how much money we had budgeted and how many applicants we had and divided it. So everybody got about five thousand. Only one business got more than that, and that was um, Norton and Sons. Because they were replacing, uh, restoring the historic Lamont Waterworks sign. So we thought they were going above and beyond, and uh, we gave them a little bit more for doing that. And it turned out awesome. It looks great. I'm glad, you know, they wanted to take that sign down, and I'd asked them, you know, would they consider replacing it? So uh, that was the only one that got more.
Okay.
Jason, how much money did you save we would have for the cares grant that you're asking for?
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I believe we have a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred thousand. No, fifty of it's going for the PPE uh, in-house, ours. So that leaves a hundred to go to businesses.
Okay, yeah, so it's a significant amount of money.
But that doesn't include the budget amount either, Jason. That would be in addition to the hundred, so I, I don't remember what that was.
We didn't budget anything for the cares grant?
No, no, I understand that, Dave, but we did budget dollars for TIF grant, small business improvements.
Oh, yeah, right.
So we got to add that to the hundred grand.
Yes.
Um, and then I have a kind of a related, but it's basically related to something Jason said, but not really specific to this. Um, what are the rules for the tents, the outside tents in the winter? There, I, I'm seeing like walls going up and enclosures, and I feel like it's no different than an inside building, so I'm just wondering.
What, what is the CO guidelines? I, I believe it's supposed to be fifty percent open. I know it's out there. It'll be interesting to see, because in Chicago, uh, they're doing igloos and greenhouses and these things that aren't really open at all. Um, Gels is intending on doing igloos. Um, and so you know, our, to this point has been, um, these are the DCO guidelines. You can read these guidelines, um, and we expect you to follow them. Okay, we're putting the I want to sit and say enforcement, but I'll, I'll just, for lack of a better word, we're putting the enforcement on the business owners. They know what the requirements are. It's clear.
Have any of the guys who have recently taken them down, are they going to be doing something else in the future, putting them back up? Do you, have you heard? Uh, for example, uh, Kuzbar, you know, he took his down, uh, Fork and Spoon, I think was down. So are there plans in the future for them to do something alternatively, or you don't know?
I haven't heard, you know, I, I've, I've seen them come down as well.
I'm guessing six months was up at the be- beginning of October.
Yeah, um, you know, some of the downtown owners are, are looking at ways to continue outdoor operations. Um, you know, Bob has been able to bring, figure out a way to bring in, you know, limited capacity. I think he has a concert coming up next weekend or something. Um, uh, up at Fork and Spoon, you know, you could have um, more occupancy in your in, in, in your booths if you do the proper, um, like, you're some sort of separate.
Okay, I was just wondering about the outside stuff, Jason. I mean, they got to do what they got to do, but
Yeah, I think the ones that are taking it down are, are hoping that they can manage with their indoor capacity. Of course, if, 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 you know, Cook County goes backwards, goes into mitigation, where they're in trouble.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess the only thing, you know, from my perspective is maybe we, I'm not looking for necessarily enforcement to beat on them, but there are some that are fully enclosed and, you know, like Cornerstones was, was fully enclosed. I don't understand why they're just not letting, telling people to go inside. It's the exact same thing, so we're kind of, we're kind of defeating, and, and I would almost think that, that the fully enclosed is going to be worse than being inside, but
From my understanding of talking with an alderman from, I think it was Highwood Park, uh, or something along those lines on a panel that I was just on. They're putting up a bunch of greenhouses, and he, when he looked into the rules, it was like something along the lines that they had to have a passable airway on both sides of uh, the uh, structure. So if it's an igloo, they have to have it either ventilated through some type of system or have to have two openings on either side. But that's just what that guy told me.
Well, a lot of, a lot of people would rather still be outside, even though it's cold and breezy than inside. So I hear what you're saying there, uh, Jason, but there's, there's just people who would prefer to stay outside.
And Downers brought out a lot of, uh, you know, I don't know if you've been to downtown Downers, I was there last week and
I only go to downtown Lamont, Dave.
I know, I was not going out in downtown Downers, I just drove through it, so.
Okay.
My, unfortunately, my doctor was not, is not in Lamont, so it's one of the few times I actually try, I don't, I leave, so. Um, but they actually had a lot of um, heat, the heat lamps.
Yeah, um.
So I, I, I wouldn't mind adding something on here to support that. I don't know if we do it on the cares grant.
The cares grant certainly would support it.
Okay.
And we could, and it, they wouldn't be, I said, you know, they wouldn't be precluded in, in the, probably in any of the other.
Okay.
Yeah, you mentioned winter improvements, right? So that
Yeah. I know Cornerstone would like to put some, you know, more permanent heaters attached to the side of their building and be able to open it up a little bit. Um, you know, they keep the, at least when I was there, they kept the side where you could exit, like aside, that sort of faces Pollyanna, that side was open. Um, everybody's scrambling and trying to figure out the way for this right now.
Hey, hey, Jason, this would be my two cents, take it for what it's worth. I, I would hope that we use this money for permanent structure, so it's not the rental of, of igloos. I mean, that would be my first two cents. The second is, is, is we should talk, um, I agree with Dave, you know, like, you know, if, if we can get some gas heaters. And I think one of the owners said it, they're like, hey, John, you know what's awesome? It's like you go into, you know, European, you know, higher end towns, they all have the same umbrellas, you know? And I don't know if we want to go that far, but just some things to think about. This is not just winter, it could be next spring as well. Maybe just keep that in mind, so that, I mean, to me, that would be cool. If everyone had the same type of umbrella, maybe, you know, the board as a whole disagrees with Maybe, you know, the board as a whole disagrees with that, but my point is, is definitely it has to be something capital that is not just seasonal and, you know, it's a rental fee, um, but it's something more permanent. And as Dave mentioned, if it's, if it's gas heaters or umbrellas, maybe you, you know, everyone kind of has the same thing or, or we, we get some sort of, I'm not saying we go into the business of buying them as a village, but maybe we find one vendor, we get some economies of scale, but maybe we get some uniform, um, at least umbrellas, you know, so, you know, it, it, it looks cool. It makes the downtown look a little bit cooler. I don't know, that's, that's my two cents.
I agree.
I'm with you, Mayor. I love uniformity. So yes, if we could have all those fire pits or whatever that you want, the same, that'd be awesome. Cause I think it would look really cool.
You guys make the rules, you know, pass an ordinance and we'll, we'll just enforce that.
Well, no, 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 actually, and-
You can be the umbrella police.
Last thing, you know, I won't put words in Janelle's mouth, but too many rules on what you know on that, but a lot of this did get brought up. A lot of this did get brought up in the downtown focus group. So I think that's where my, my ideas are coming from. They're not really my ideas here.
Nah, I agree. It can impact for sure. It definitely makes an impact. I'm with you and, and Janelle and the focus group on that. I would like to see the same.
So, J- Janelle, maybe, uh, just, you know, um, stay in tune with Jason on something like that, I guess.
Sounds good.
All right. All right. Anything else, Jason? Do, do, do you need what you need or-
You got it.
Any other questions for us?
Nope.
All right, cool. All right, well, thanks again. Okay, uh, any unfinished or new business? Audience participation, George, you want to take that?
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, I'm sure you're not needed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. I will open it up now to the audience participation. I know you don't have too many people other than the board and staff on, uh, line. So just please raise your hand and I will call you up. I will, uh, get you a chance to think about it. I did get one, uh, email comment. Uh, and I think we covered it, but I'll just make note, um, should have mentioned it during the, uh, the bridge uh, request or discussion is that Matt Giblin did send an email. He couldn't make the meeting tonight, but, um, kind of what we talked about had concerns over, um, not going to read the whole thing, but, uh, just concerns over the, uh, competing festivals, events and weddings. I think we covered that with the threshold of, um, number of, of attendees at a, at an event that shuttles will be provided. Uh, but, um, just want to make that note, just a concern about, um, competing events in the downtown. So uh, that's all I had in written. I will, uh, look for hands now. I don't see any, Mr. Mayor, so I will turn it back over to you.
Awesome. We're going to beat the, the two minute or the two hour threshold here. So, um, executive session, we do not have tonight, correct, George? So, um, we are going to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting at eight twenty-six. So thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Everyone have a great week.
So far, people have voted in Lamont.